Live from the city building in Athens, Ohio, your local source for live city meetings. TGC 15 presents Athens City Council.
Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, September 22, 2008. It's on or about 7:00 p.m. And this evening, City Council will be meeting in a special session with a very short two-item agenda, after which we will be going into an executive session. Hopefully, a fairly short one to discuss collective bargaining only. At 7:30, we hope to be finished with that discussion. And City Council will be back to go through a series of about five committee meetings. So we do have a quorum with one, two, three, four, five, six of seven members of council present. Ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 9808 and ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 21 subdivision regulations. Ordinance 9908 and ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 27 land development. Those are the two readings that we have. Next item on our agenda is an executive session. To go into executive session takes both motion, a second, and a roll call. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
To include. To include the law director, all members of council, and any members, oh, and Kathy. And if Paula and Paul show up, them too.
Okay. Member Nicely.
Aye.
Member Sands.
Aye.
Bing?
Aye.
Kuhn?
Aye.
We got them all. We will ask that the room be cleared within five minutes. If there are questions for any council members, you're welcome to.
Would that be an easier way to do it?
Yes.
Why don't we let you relax? And council will retire to its council office. And we'll be back in about 30 minutes.
Or less.
Or less.
It's about 7:30 on Monday, the 22nd. We're meeting right now in a series of committees with Athens City Council. The first committee meeting is our Community Issues Committee. And our first order of business there will be a report from our Clean Committee regarding recycling in the Uptown area. Linda Phillips?
I think everyone should have a report that was emailed to them from today. Thank you, Debbie. The Clean Committee was formed from, the Clean Uptown Committee was formed from the larger committee called the Clean Committee. That was started with former Mayor Abel. And in August of 2007, they wanted a subcommittee just to focus on the uptown trash and recycling and beautification issues. So a very diverse group of people have been meeting since August of 2007 and have come up with some recommendations. And we have a few people here to talk about the recommendations.
I'm just going to ask that each of these people introduce themselves because we are on TV and not everybody knows all of them.
Okay. I'm Linda Phillips.
Thank you.
And I was a community member. And this is...
I'm Michael Gosnell, the solid waste and litter control officer for the city of Athens.
Leslie Shaller.
Josh Thomas.
Roger Bale.
Thank you.
And these are a few members of the committee. And I thought they would be able to best answer questions that you may have tonight. So the committee came up with some recommendations. And we sorted it into two different segments. The first segment and what we really wanted to talk about tonight was actually eliminating curbside trash and recycling pickup in the uptown area due to multiple problems that have been experienced over the years with setting out trash on the curbs every night from businesses and students and people that live out in the uptown area. And then the second part, which we will continue to meet, will be about the actual maintenance of sidewalks and trash sites and recycling sites and just kind of overall beautification regarding the trash. So I'm going to let, because I assume the report is fairly self-explanatory, I'm going to let Mike talk about some technical issues as the litter enforcement personnel.
Thank you. As Linda mentioned, the goal was to take trash off of the street from being placed there for curbside collection. Briefly, as we know, we've got different parties that use Court Street. We have businesses that use Court Street from 9:00 to 5:00, basic business hours. We have a nightlife which uses Court Street from, you know, 9:00 p.m. until 2:00 or 3:00 a.m. And then we have the residential aspect of Court Street. We have roughly 800 to 1,000 people living on Court Street using it, you know, 24 hours a day. And so Court Street's also used for the main trash collection, just like it would be in a residential area, but with the density of it, trash is collected daily. That leads to a nuisance aspect of garbage bag getting set on the curb from businesses at, say, 5:00 o'clock when they leave. Trash bags are set on there. And then you still have all of the residents that live up there that have to walk past those trash bags on the curb. And then the nightlife that occurs after 5:00 p.m., which can lead to some litter and trash issues amongst the sidewalks and street. So what the Clean Committee has worked on over about the last 10 months or so is a way to eliminate curbside collection of trash and recycling. By doing that, we've focused on locating centralized collection areas within Court Street where every resident would have an area, such as a dumpster, to dispose of their solid waste and also access to recycling drop-off points also. Currently, there's not a lot of recycling that occurs on Court Street overall. There are a couple of really nice sites that do get utilized quite heavily, but those sites aren't ranging through the whole spectrum of the street. So we focused on locating areas where we can centralize collection via dumpsters and via recycling containers for public use.
Any questions yet?
Any other questions on that summary of it? And this is Roger Bale. We've worked more of the details of collecting, recycling, and the solid waste in the area. Roger?
Thank you, Mike. I'm Roger Bale of the Athens Hocking Recycling Centers. I've been asked to come to a number of the Clean Committee meetings and talk about logistics and the possibilities of collecting trash and recycling in a different manner than we do now. We've explored a lot of different areas in Athens. And in the downtown area, the alleys are very narrow and the streets are narrow and there's parking in front of all the store businesses. So room available in the right of ways is very, very limited and it's real valuable and it's hard to offset the need for parking when you want to put a trash container or recycling container there. Through this process, we've identified approximately 12 areas in the downtown corridor of Court Street where garbage collection, either dumpsters or poly carts could be used. Under this scenario, the businesses and the residents in the downtown area would be asked to take their materials to these designated points and place it there. In the same vicinity would be the opportunity for recycling, containers to be put out for the different types of recycling to be placed there. And we would modify our routes so that we would both collect garbage as needed and additionally send a recycling truck to these remote areas to service those areas and take the materials I've been asked to verify whether our trucks will fit to these locations. And if a container was here, how big could it be? And what do you need?
How safely can you, your people work with it? We really worked very closely with Roger to make, to address the safety, where the containers were, if his trucks would work there. We actually physically walked to all these sites and measured and talked to all the business owners that would, who would have things located on their sites. So Roger was a big part of us being able to pick those locations because they have to work for his group.
And that's about where we're at. I mean, we want to continue doing the city's work. Bottom line is if the city wants to do it differently, we want to be there to do it. That's my thrust toward this. If we like the need to change, then change is not always a bad thing. It's just different sometimes.
Roger?
Yes, sir.
At this time, most pickup is at curbside. When do you usually, when do your trucks usually come through the uptown area?
The Packer trucks, as far as the refuse trucks, start their shifts around 4:30 in the morning. We do the downtown area first. There's no parking on Court Street. It's posted before 6:00 a.m. That gives us that unique window of time that we can get in and out, utilize the full width of the street to make the turns to get in the alleys and out of the alleys. And likewise, traffic's not near as heavy, so we don't have to deal with all the vehicles and cars traveling around. The recycling currently is around 7:00 a.m. Monday through Friday, we come up through and collect recycling.
Parking is back on the street at that point?
Uh, yes.
Or beginning?
Yes. It's beginning to pick up. The downtown area, in my opinion, doesn't start getting real bad until between 7:45 and 8:00, things start picking up pretty regularly there.
Any other questions for coming? Thank you, Roger.
Again, my name is Josh Thomas. I'm here actually speaking as the chair of the Uptown Business Association. Just to sort of give you our take on this, we were asked to participate in this also to get the opinion of the uptown businesses. Obviously, we see this as a good thing in terms of marketing our uptown area. If anybody's ever been uptown on an early Saturday morning or an early Friday morning, our streets usually and our sidewalks are not very clean. And a lot of times, that's from the trash, the trash pickup, the trash, you know, in the evening. If you've ever been on Union Street early in the morning when the recycling has been taken out or on a Saturday morning when the recycling has been knocked over and knocked all over the street, it's unsightly. And if we can come up with a system that gets that trash off the sidewalks and into certain collection areas, we think that it's going to make our uptown a much nicer place to visit when people do come. My biggest concern is always, I always say, when the university has tours and there's parents in town, we want our town to look nice. And it welcomes people into our uptown. So we feel it's a very important thing for this to happen. As for the containers and trash cans that are on the street, I see this personally. And again, it's a concern for all the businesses that obviously the trash truck goes by at 6:00 in the morning and collects all that. But, you know, what do we do when a student walks out of their apartment and puts two large trash bags in that receptacle? And now it's full. It's 7:00 a.m. and that receptacle's full. So the rest of the day, if somebody buys a chiller from Brennan's and they put their, they need a place to put their empty cup, those cans are already full. And again, we sort of have a slightly mess on our hands. So again, some sort of regulation to get the students also. And it's an education piece. We all understand that. To get the students, the landlords, everybody to understand that there are places where trash belong, the receptacles on the street would be for people on the street, basically. But again, we support this in terms of keeping our streets clean, making our uptown a little more welcoming, you know, and a little more beautiful.
Good evening. I guess I'm mostly just representing both the Athens Uptown Business Association and a long-term business establishment that's been very committed to recycling for the last 23 years uptown. And I think, you know, curbside recycling was a great plus for us a number of years ago. And I think there's still incredible dedication and commitment by a lot of property owners and leaseholders, especially doing business on the first floor of Court Street, who want to do more recycling. But I think there has been a lot of challenges. And, you know, obviously, the devil is in the details here in terms of what the price tag is going to be and how we're going to make this work. Because there's certainly a challenge in terms of the education piece of this, whether it's trash or whether it's recycling. Because uptown is diverse. We've got residents, we have business owners, we have property owners that perhaps don't even have that much day-to-day involvement in their properties in uptown. So I think, you know, I just want to dino, obviously, the statements that Josh has made. As someone who's attended Athens Uptown Business Association meetings for what appears to be decades, I guess, at this time, you know, we've talked about all these issues, trash, gum, graffiti, you know. I always say...
Vomit. Vomit is the one that I want to hear about now.
One of my, you know, most challenging ones. And, you know, since the Smoke Free Ohio piece, I think as a business owner, one of our latest challenges in terms of the amount of labor it takes us to manage our sidewalks is the amount of cigarette butts that we have to clean up. So, you know, this is, for me, the first step. And I guess what I'm interested in hearing is, I feel that there is a strong commitment from both council and from the administration to help us solve some of these issues, to make our commercial business district more vital and to really, it needs, as everyone knows, tremendous work in terms of beautification and just the usability for all these different constituencies. And I would like to figure out how we can maybe innovate and experiment and see if we can solve some of these problems that I have years of fatigue talking about, so.
I wanted to add, oh, sorry.
Linda, if you're going to say anything more, you need to move Leslie out because the microphones really don't pick you up.
Move me away.
I wanted to add that we really focused on the cool cities with the recycling. We really, really wanted to push the recycling as it currently stands. Any of the apartments that live above or people that live above these businesses, I really don't see a lot of recycling going on for the sheer fact that they probably don't want to store their beer bottles for a week in a small orange container in a small living space. So I'm, we're noticing that they're mostly being thrown away and not recycled. This would definitely allow for a lot more recycling. And also, if you look at the recommendations, we simply, in this first part, have addressed the recycling and the trash. And we know that we have to address the cigarette butts, the beautification, the gum, the maintenance of the sidewalks. And I also wanted to...
And the vomit.
Yes, the vomit. It's worse than any recycling I've ever seen.
We did talk a lot of vomit, so, no, that's a problem. And then I wanted to let everybody know that we have very specifics as far as the size of poly carts that will be needed, the coloring and all that. And it's all written down and Mike has all of that information. So we're not just giving you a kind of a real broad what we want this, but we don't have any specifics for you. We definitely have that information.
That was my question.
I just wanted to say again, you know, thanks to the Clean Committee. I think it's been a great example of a partnership with folks from the neighborhood associations, the Chamber, AUBA, the city. I'm really glad to see everybody working together on this. And I was really happy to see in the written document here, is it AUBA that bought the sidewalk cleaning machine?
We actually think it's a business owner himself
Okay.
who has purchased it and is going to allow us to use it. That's still something we're working on.
That's great. You know, that's something that I know was talked about a couple of years ago. And it wasn't something that was really in the city's budget. And there was a whole discussion about how the partnership can work for things like that to move ahead. And I'm just really glad to see that happening. So thank you.
Actually, the problem was that it was, there was a union issue with it as well, as Jim probably remembers.
Layers.
It was a labor that we could not do it.
Did you, were you going to say something else?
No.
Anybody over there?
Thank them very much. For me, too.
Just to say that, yeah, I very much appreciate Project Clean's work and the Uptown Business Association. Just walking from lower campus up here tonight and stopping at a few businesses and noticing that at 5:00 p.m. tonight, you're right, the trash cans, the municipal trash cans were overflowing and people setting the Wendy's cup, in this case, you know, on the newspaper stand. And so something like this, I think, affords us some great possibilities. So thank you.
Thank you all. And Mike, you have more specifics about things? So if you could get that to us, we'll be happy to talk about that in committee and get, put some prices to it and follow up. So are you going to say something, Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just wanted to state, as was indicated tonight, we would have education. And, you know, there'd be a lot of that going, but without the teeth of an ordinance legislating the removal of those household trash off the, you know, the main street, Court Street, we wouldn't have any teeth to work with that.
Thank you very much. I apologize for postponing you, but it was worth the wait. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We actually have a second presentation for our Community Issues Committee. Pam Harvey is here from United Appeal to talk about a new informational site on our telephone.
Yes.
I'm trying to figure out the best way to do this.
Put him here and we'll pass him.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for your time tonight, council, Mr. Mayor. I'm Pam Harvey. I'm Director of United Appeal for Athens County. And Patrick Lang is on our board, so we appreciate your service. Hi, Pat. And I'm here just to give you a brief summary in case you don't know about what United Appeal is and talk about a very important project for the community that we're involved in. First of all, United Appeal is a 55-year-old organization that raises money for 13 partner agencies. And in the brochure that I've distributed to you, you can see those agencies, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Red Cross, Visiting Nurse and Hospice, Girl Scouts, a lot of the organizations that you're familiar with in our community are ones that benefit from people's gifts to United Appeal. For 55 years, we've been fundraisers. And right now, we're in the process of working, actually doing some programming. And the program that we are working to bring to this community is really to bring something back and in an enhanced version. So one of the first documents that I gave you is just a media release about what is 2-1-1. And 2-1-1 is a service that we want to bring to Athens County. And I say that we're bringing it back because if you've been in town for a while and you're a member of the services of Care Line that was hosted by Tri-County Mental Health and basically went out of business in 2003 because of funding problems. They provided a broad range of social and community service information, basically people who need help or people who want to give help. And we are bringing that back to the community in conjunction with United Way from Missingham and Perry Morgan Counties. We're going to have a four-county 2-1-1 call center. And if you've ever been in a big city or, you know, heard of things in a big city, this is something that big cities have and that we're really excited to be bringing to the Athens County community. It's something that by working with three other counties, we hope that, you know, basically for about the amount of money that it costs to run Care Line, hopefully, we can serve four counties. And there's really a push to bring the service around the state into every single county in the state. And I should just say, and then I'll let you ask questions, but the reason that we're able to do this right now is Ohio United Way, which is a membership organization for groups like ours in the state, worked really hard with Governor Strickland and the state legislature. And we have a grant that is going to let us bring this up, bring this into operation. So all the technical costs, the startup costs that have been prohibitive for a 2-1-1 call center, we are going to be able to do that in the first year. And then United Appeal and the United Way of Missingham, Perry, Morgan has committed to ongoing funding for this service. One of the other documents, I think I did give it to you, just to give you an example, there's a press release of Governor Strickland's office in response to the windstorms that we had in the last week. And one of the other features of a 2-1-1 call center is that in a non-emergency disaster situation, 2-1-1 is an easily recognizable number for people to call and say, you know, where's a shelter? I'm out of electricity. Where can I find ice? Any of those kinds of things that you've heard of in the last week, 2-1-1 can be a central call center for people to get that information. And at the bottom of his release, you know, the governor says, call 112, call 2-1-1 if it's available in your area. So we hope that within the next six months, certainly at the beginning of 2009, that that service would be available in our area. What we're specifically asking from council and what we've also asked of the mayor is if you would provide a letter of support. And those letters of support are crucial because all 2-1-1 centers have to be accredited nationally. And part of that is having the community support. And so at some point in time, I may come to ask you for money. But right now, you know, the letter is just saying that you support this service in our community and that you support United Appeal as being the people that are trying to bring everybody together to do it.
Pam just answered my question. Anybody else have questions, comments? Mayor?
Pam approached me a couple of weeks ago. We're already bringing this up, and I thought it was a good idea. I've yet to write my letter of support. I'm tired of that.
That's right. I probably haven't gotten you a sample letter either yet, so I'll make sure that I do that again if I need to. Thanks.
If you could give us the sample letter, we'll...
I think I put one in your packet. Make sure that there's something there. It's quite a straightforward letter.
I couldn't figure out how to pull the papers out of the packet, so I passed it all along. It's hard to have it.
I'll make sure that you get one. I'll make sure that you even get an electronic copy, maybe through Debbie, so.
Give it to Debbie.
Yeah, give it.
Okay. I could email it to Debbie. And we're looking for that really within the next months to six weeks. Does that seem to fit a timeframe?
Oh, yeah.
What process do you have to go through to write that or?
We'll come up with it and then get it approved at a committee meeting and then vote on it. So it's going to, it'll take three or four weeks anyway.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no miscellaneous. Do you, councilmember?
I don't want to talk about noise, but I'll wait till I get to utilities.
Okay. So we're going to, we're done with Community Issues. We're moving on to Planning and Development Committee.
I have two things on my agenda. First, we wanted to talk again about the Responsible Contractor Language. You have a draft of the resolution. Ilahu's not able to be here tonight and asked me to go ahead and speak to this. This has just the criteria and not all those different little pieces of rationale that we, that were in the document we looked at two weeks ago. So, I mean, those are still, you know, the reasons for the criteria, but they don't need to be in the document itself. And again, I think when we talked about it two weeks ago, we talked about the fact that there would be an actual checklist created so that when there's an invitation to bid, bidders would be able to kind of check things off and make sure they have the documents they need to demonstrate their compliance. Jim?
I had a question last time, and I, reading the language here, I still don't think it's totally clear that this is, this applies to projects that the city is bidding only. I think it's implied, but I, I don't see the language that says that clearly.
Okay. I mean, it's...
Number one, you could say.
In number one, the city shall undertake with bidder a constructibility and scope review.
On all city.
On all city projects. Okay. We can put the word city in, in front of bid.
Yeah.
Okay.
And for what it's worth, just the fact that it's been drafted as a resolution means that it could only apply to the city as employer. It wouldn't be able to apply to anyone beyond that. But I think it's a good idea, though.
Thank you.
We also had asked for, two weeks ago, and received a copy of the Responsible Contractor Resolution that the commissioners have already in place. Did everybody receive a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay. I was actually thinking, looking at that, that some of the whereas's were a little bit more substantive about the things that we talked about, that this is an attempt to be responsible with the taxpayers' money and make sure we are being able to look at the quality of work and the performance of contractors when they bid on projects to really protect the investment that citizens are making in infrastructure projects. So I was thinking I might pull some of those whereas's over into this as well before we read it.
Sounds good.
So I think it makes that really clear.
Let's do it.
So I will talk to Ilahu about that also. Anything else?
We got a copy of the resolution, right?
Or this resolution?
Resolution.
From the commissioners?
The draft that we have?
Yes.
Yeah, and this has been reviewed by the law director's office. And I think it's pretty straightforward.
Thanks. Thanks, DeBelle.
Okay, so we'll have this up for first reading next week?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Next week's the fifth Monday, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Did anybody else want to speak to this? Okay. And the zoning code non-conforming uses, I believe, is a Nancy Vane issue.
Oh, I was, I've decided to take a different pathway.
Okay. Does anyone have miscellaneous for planning and development? And we're adjourned, and on to utilities.
Utilities commission, okay. In a moment of hope, Debbie said she was hoping to be out of here by nine o'clock, so I was going to try and indulge that. Utilities Committee comes to order. I think we have some materials to talk about a few things. The first one is a proposal I discussed, actually Jim and I meet with the mayor and Kathy every Tuesday. And I talked at that point about bringing in some outside expertise, maybe to take a look at the South Side water delivery system. We have four different appurtenances out there, at least, maybe five, and they all have had, I guess it was brought home to me that in, when I was asking for information, this was with respect to the Blackburn Hill tank, the information was 1976. So I said, "Ooh, a lot of things have happened. Reducing valves and other things like that were, have come into play." And we all know, yesterday, the South Side had a problem with water. There is a break that happens with the electricity. And I guess my analogy is, maybe it's sort of like the car where you've had it to four different people and everybody spent $100 on it and nobody still can fix it. And you finally find the one person that reads all the manuals and looks and figures out exactly what's going on. Could almost think about it as a GIS, where are all those things with respect to flows? And is there something they could do differently? We could do differently? And it seems like an outside expert coming in fresh to the scene. Is there a valve that's goofed up? I know we had, we had pumps that were knocking our service out for about a weekend, but it didn't go on forever, which this might seem a bit like. And so I would like to propose that we put up a study proposal, I thought maybe $100,000. That's no Danish, but less than the roundabout study. I don't know if $100,000 is right. I know as soon as we put a number on it, guess what? That'll be the amount of the bid. So somebody, maybe you can ask Andy, what do you think would be a good thing to go and look at all of those, all of those past studies and figure out what we could do? And then, you know, if it's 100, okay. If it's 50, even better.
Okay.
If, provided everybody wants to do it, you know.
Okay. I think the study you're talking about is actually 1975, not '76.
Oh, even better, okay.
Much more vintage.
Yes, right.
And I think there was a '97 concerning some of the South Side, but not entirely all. Each part has covered different sections of the South Side water system. So I'm aware of what you're talking about. I got some calls. Nobody had water on Coach, I believe. They have a boil order even as we speak of them. Again, this is what, this occurred last week as well, so it's two weeks, weekends in a row, it seems.
Bill called me, I raved on Sunday morning. No coffee, no shower.
Part of, I'd probably want to put together an RFP and see what kind of scope we're talking about, because there are other issues with the South Side. And probably ask Andy and Nick Carr and Nick Joe for expertise, as well as Crystal, because there are issues with all the delivery of the system there.
Right, and we have potentially a problem in the Blackburn Hill with a...
Turnover.
Turnover. And we have, Kimes has slipped down the hill, I mean, has been a slip problem. And I don't know about Longview, but this Curtis Street seems to be a major problem. You know, maybe we ought to, as you're talking about scope of services, maybe ought to say, what other areas are we not serving that we might serve in the future? Like on the South Black Rock Griffler Road? And maybe we really need to move Curtis to another location, so it's...
Actually, the explanation I got is actually the Longview reservoir is actually causing a problem when the pump's shut down between there and the Curtis reservoir. That's what slams the Curtis one. It's the, it's the height of the Longview one and the inability of the, not so much the check valve, whatever it is equivalent of a large check valve to shut down in a timely manner. So that's one issue I hear. But then again, the delivery of Blackburn is another one. Remember, Mayor Abel was talking about trying to connect Blackburn Road to the Richland Avenue conduit with the idea you create a circuit and have higher turnover and eliminate the pump stations from Carriage Hill, Courtyard, and Summit at the time.
Yeah, I was dubious of that one because it seemed to me that the problem has been Curtis and Longview more than, I mean, other than the THMs.
Well, if they're all interconnected, then in theory, you could actually push the water into Curtis and Longview.
The biggest part of the city is served out of one big reservoir on the, well, two, on the north side, and there's less problem. I mean, saying, and I guess that, you know, I'm glad the citizens have been, have been, let's say, gentle with us, but at a certain point, we've got to figure it out, and I hope that this time we can do it.
The telephone calls I received Sunday were not terribly gentle.
I'm sure. Yeah, well, they don't probably get up as early as I do, but, you know, I remember the weekend that mine kept going out because of the new pumps and slamming. But, you know, if you have four different engineering groups designing them, and then you put in a check valve, and you put in a reducing valve, and you have all these other things going on, you're going to have a problem. And so we need some sort of ubermeister to take a look at it and say, "What's going on here? What's going to happen?" You okay? You got that puzzled look on your face?
I haven't heard the word ubermeister in a while.
I don't know where it came from.
Okay. Really what you're talking about is appropriating a certain amount of money for a study, and an RFP has to be generated for that.
Yeah, tell me how much, tell Debbie how much you want, and we will, we will put it in. I'd like to read them three weeks in a row and get it done as quickly as possible so we don't have any more of this.
Okay. And a dollar amount's kind of hard to figure that out, but, and again, that's, that still means that we come to a, we have a study, then we have to fund whatever the study, you know...
Yeah, and as long as the person doing it has, doesn't have some sort of agenda about serving Copper Beach more than getting rid of THMs, you know? I mean, that's just kind of my, my opinion, because you could always just send the water down the hill, except it might go in Sherry's basement. But, but, I mean, there are other, there are multiple ways to solve problems, and I'd like to have each of those addressed instead of trying to serve some developer community, if we could. Anybody else want to jump in on this one? Pat, was your water out?
Yes. No, I just, the mayor makes a good point, which I, we're all aware of, that we're asking to fund a study to make recommendations on how to deal with this problem, and those recommendations are going to have costs, big costs associated with them. And so as long as we're all aware of that, this is a perennial problem in a fairly large area of the city. So it's probably pastime that it was addressed, and things only get more expensive.
And realize, that has nothing to do with the INI problem, which is the other side of the...
That'll be next, next month.
And we're, you know, we do have a, I think you probably got a copy of the spreadsheet and a card generated for capital improvements for the next five years, and they were all very pricey. And in each case, we told them to whittle it down to something workable, you know, little pieces. And even then, it's, you can only do so much with so much money.
I know what the guys who are fixing the water line, so Joneswood, said they'd had about five places they thought really needed to be fixed in the next year, sort of Tom Peters type of stuff.
I think you still have the map from the break that we generated.
Of the breaks, yep.
Okay, so you know what we're looking at there. Is that still in council chambers, I assume?
I think so. I wish we had a, you know, I wish our GIS actually, I mean, you could actually probably see this if you could look at it spatially, because the up, the near east side and the north side all have the advantage of one big massive hill. But take a look at the South Side, it's all dissected by Richland Avenue, and there's where the problem comes from, because you have, in each of those high points, you have a water holding facility, and that's what the problem is fundamentally. And, you know, it may be some incompatibility we haven't even thought about. At least that's the way I, I'm hoping for a silver bullet.
Cheap fix.
Well, I mean, cheap compared to millions.
I understand.
Because we've got to be very careful in the next year, so, okay.
I would just add, it's no secret that the city has an aging infrastructure, and it's going to need to be addressed at some point or sometime now and in the future.
We made the map, and we said that for a recent passer, hasn't been as much of it. And, but earlier times, we were doing quite a bit of upgrading. We have more to do, though.
Yeah.
So it's up to you guys.
And realize, it costs all the departments when this happens. I mean, when we blow out a pipe and it takes out part of the street, then we're repairing the street as well, and it's, both departments get hit. I mean, example of that is Union Street, it was Memorial Day, I think it was, just a week before then, just uplifted all of Union Street, and not only replacing pipe, but we also had to sit there and redo some of the asphalt on West Union. So it starts to add up when you have little things like this.
Okay, so that's our, kind of our, if we can get it done by maybe the first of January, we would know what we're going to do next year.
Okay.
Okay, next thing on my agenda is really tied with the second one. I have to say that various people have said to me, "Why am I spending $1 a month? I still see a lot of litter in the close-in neighborhoods." And I think all of us have heard that, and they have no compunction about hitting me across the side of head with it. So here I am saying, gee, as I was sitting down at my food pantry, because some wonderful drunk kicked in the door and I was, we were fixing it, I watched the litter blow, and I thought, "Well, where's that litter coming from?" And I thought, "You know what? I think if we made everybody have a legal garbage container in that area..." Does this sound like a broken record to some of you? I've said this before. "In those close-in neighborhoods, maybe that garbage wouldn't blow around so much, and maybe our litter problem, not red and blue cups, mind you, but the other litter problem, would be reduced." So I was wondering if, red and blue cups aside, and natty light boxes aside, we could make an effort, either in code or with your litter control person, to start to address the legal garbage container issue. Paula, especially, I'm imploring you to do this. Please.
Michael stayed so he could hear this.
He could hear all about it.
Yeah, no, that's what, basically, I think, you know, people say, "Let's see, let's see some, let's see some output." And I'm sure there's output compared to it, but the perception is, they're paying for whatever. It's another tax, that is. Anyway, you've all, you've heard it as well, haven't you? And, yeah, you have to, okay.
And Nancy, just briefly, I would agree. I think if we could, I think there is something on code that says for multi-unit places, there's to be kept enclosed?
Yes, absolutely. It has to be stored.
And you just don't see that happening very often in the up...
They're supposed to have lids.
They're supposed to have lids that fit.
Yeah, so I think that would...
Yeah, I mean, there's, what a concept. Okay, that's my admonition. I just don't want to hear it, you know, it's as bad as living on the South Side and hearing about the water breaks. Okay, next question. Next item on my agenda is funds for the Service Garage site. We have had some overland salt movement into the next yard. I guess I was thinking about what I was going to say about this, and I remembered that we bought that lot after the Service Garage compound was fixed. When we went on our tour, we saw it, the salt area. And we have a potential plan for roughly $5 million, probably be $10 million by the time we get to it, dollars, but we probably, in today's world, can't imagine borrowing $5 million to do a new service garage at this point in time with the roundabout and other things coming down the path. At least that's my opinion. I mean, unless we're going to just ask for a huge tax increase, and I don't, you know, I've been watching the new, I read the news alerts, and "Stock market up, stock market down, cut the university here." And I think I would rather take a more conservative approach. You can shut me down if you wish. And my more conservative approach, once again, I discussed with the mayor, and I thought, whatever happens in that lot that we bought, where we've been doing our salt loading, we probably have to do some paving and containment. Beyond that, the mayor can say if he wants to put containers in there. I think we need at least a tarp on top of it if it's sitting there. And you can, you know, I mean, if some, tell us what you want, there's always that thing in the future. For 10 years, we do a good job with this storage and dispersment, then at the end of 10 years, we can walk away from this without a problem. But it's probably not going to happen, even if it, even if we got the money by some miraculous change in the economy. And I don't think that's going to happen. But let's just say if we got it, we could, we'd still have to probably do something to prevent the contamination from going overland and from percolating through, because there's groundwater. And Paul said to me earlier that there may be, it may be the case that they've solved the problem with the percolation, with the groundwater. We don't know. I mean, there's, it's ambiguous. But I'd like to start something through that has an attempt to remediate, or at least to protect that site against, I've been only saying this, as Debbie will tell you for 10 years, I'm such an egg, and I've not been able to get any, I mean, it's a management problem, and management is much better now, but even so, we've got all the past things we have to take care of here. Okay? So anybody have any question? Yeah?
Oh, I'd like your committee to go first.
You can go ahead. They're still astonished that I'm not...
Okay. This is talking about the salt bin, actually, that's falling apart and is old. Conversation I had with Andy earlier today, I said, "Okay, what would it take to fix this up?" And really what your discussion we had last Tuesday about this at the auditor, with the auditor, at that time was, okay, in terms of containment for the salt, so no more gets into the soil, is actually build a new salt bin with a pad, with some kind of drainage. I asked Andy essentially, what would it take to design something like this in engineering? He's estimating about $30,000, which means, again, it goes out to an RFP, Request for Proposals, for engineering design. I think I said, "Okay, what price are we talking about?" He said, "Well, the high end would be about $300,000." And his side, his thing on that is that, well, last time he looked at something like this was five, six years ago, it was, you know, $150 or something like that. But the fact is, we have to decide what we wanted, how we want to do this. The storage right now, capacity we have of our present salt bin is 1/5 of the required salt for any given season. So that means five times in the winter, we're moving salt into there. The fact is, it does not, it has a permeable base to it, and that causes, any movement can generate a contamination, whether the five motions in, or the other ones, or just loading the systems out.
Yeah, both ways.
Just a quick question. When we were on the street tour, I don't remember whether we talked about if building a pad is going to contain whatever's already in the soil and stop it perking down and contaminating our wells, and, you know, having additional detects, or if we actually need to figure out how deep it goes and remove soil.
That's, that's a question I was trying to pin down at the point, too. There's, the options I'm hearing are several options. One is we remove all the soil. I think we're waiting for feedback on that. Remediation for the, if you remember, the TCEs was, I think, a metasulfate or bisulfate thing that was supposed to be done in the spring. As far as I know, they should be getting results, they should have gotten results back from now on out, but I have not received them, at least any numbers. I'd like to see the report, being the wonky chemist that I am. At the same time, there is, there are options. One would be to dig all the soil out. Another one would be just to, you know, to cover it so it doesn't permeate anymore. The idea is not to put any more in the system. It will dissolve out over time with just regular flow. It's not a high level of chloride, but at the same time, it is, it is concerning that you have it going in. My recommendation would be actually, you know, the best of all worlds would be to buy a big, you know, complex outside the well field, which includes everything, which is what Nancy was alluding to, the $4 or $5 million superstructure. In the interim, I think the best thing we could do is to cap it off, if possible. Get first the recommendations, whether we need to dig the soil out, whether we just cap it off, but definitely we want to contain any type of motion we have with salt collection and movement. And that would imply a larger salt bin, so we can either do it all under shelter, or we have it all, all movements under shelter, as well as a pad, so it can contain all. I think it's a giant tray, or something like that, that you keep under your washing machine.
Containment is important.
Yeah. So, and, so right now, I'm looking and saying, if you really want to move on this, you want to, you want to appropriate some money for a design and engineering, we'll go from there. And again, I'm going with Andy's recommendation, about $30,000, which is cheaper.
Anybody have any questions on this?
I have a question regarding, you mentioned the possibility of a $300,000 salt bin.
Yes.
Is that building a larger salt bin than we currently have, or is that about the Is that building a larger salt bin than we currently have, or is that about the same size?
Larger salt bin with a containment pad. In other words, you'd build a concrete pad with a lip, with control drainage, so you can actually monitor any runoff of, of that, off that pad. Think, I said, think of a giant tray with a, with a drain going to it that you can follow where it's going.
Okay.
So it includes both, and the idea is, and the best case scenario is that you put all the salt in once, one time in the year, and any loading or unloading of the trucks can be done under that shelter. The biggest example you could see would be the O dot one on 56, just off of 56 and 682.
Which has containment.
Which is, yeah.
Okay.
Does that answer?
Would that be at the current location?
Yes. We don't have another location that's easier to work with. The, the argument goes back and forth, is that the, they want the heated service garage bays for their trucks, and it's right next to the salt containment, salt bins. The, the concept we were kicking around at one point is, okay, let's move the salt bin over to the wastewater treatment plant, which is all at the other side of town. At that point, the truck's over here, the snow is in the middle, and the salt's over there.
And the citizens are, are rain, because their streets are icy.
Yeah. I mean, in theory, you could say, okay, what we do is, we have salt over there, the truck's over here, and when the snow starts falling, we move the trucks over there, fill them up, and put them back in the bends, in the bays for the evening, and then the first, first run we do is just to get from point A to point B, so we can fill the trucks up again. The next pricey one would be, build a salt bin on, on, you know, at the wastewater treatment plant with heated garages, which is what they want. They, they need to maintain the temperature of the trucks so they can actually use them. That, now you're talking about partial service garage over there and a salt bin. Now, we're halfway between a whole new facility.
Okay.
And what Nancy's talking about is, in 10 years, maybe we can afford to move it out of the well field entirely. I know that the water department would like to get it out entirely at this point, just because by wellhead protection standards, it's always, it's always questionable activity. So in the interim, we'd be talking about, we, really, the thing is that the salt bin's been falling apart for several years now, and we've been waffling on this as long as I've been sitting and watching council.
And I've been fussing for a long time.
What?
I've been fussing for a long time about it.
Yes, I've been watching Nancy fuss for a long time.
About that one, and other things, too, but that one.
And other things, too.
So any other questions about this? This is a, and again, time is of the essence, it seems, because I'm, I'm going to also start my ordinances through, if it's okay. Allahuzia and Sheri are on my committee. We have traditional purchases of reagents, salt, chlorine, sulfur dioxide for cleaning the chloride out of the wa, chlorine out of the water at the water treatment plant, and one other thing which I can't, caustic soda. We've all read in our various literatures about how expensive salt is. And that is a, that is a question. I don't know how it will go.
You need to get Andy on that.
And so, I will start that through, so you can have November, December, to try and figure out what's happening about that. I, I guess this year, it's probably a luxury, you might be able to get the pad built, because I was thinking, like, five of my driveways, how much would it cost, probably?
Well, there's a slight difference, realize, you're talking about a nice, like, Prius and a minivan versus a bunch of front-end loaders with full salts.
No, no, I'm talking about the amount of them, the amount of, cost, 150? I mean, we could possibly get it done before the snow flies.
Well, if you're going to do a design, that's going to take time. I mean, think about it, if you go out to bid on this, you know, to open it up.
Responsible bid, huh?
Yeah, responsible bid. You proceed to do a design of it, and you get some feedback on it.
Okay, so I guess we're not going to do it this year.
Well, it'd be, it'd be nice to at least start it this year. And again, you have to look and say, salt is very corrosive to concrete as well, so we have to make sure whatever we put together is going to hold up. This is what you hear about salt on a, on a parking garage, if you remember.
My engineering students always talk about that. So, here we are, and then we're going to, I also think that eventually, salt will not be used on roads because of the water contamination, but it's probably further down the line. You guys may be here, I won't. Okay.
If, I just want to, if it, if it comes true that we can't do anything with the, with the concrete this winter until next spring, then at that point, can we ask the streets' director to look at the, a temporary cost of, of erecting something over the salt bin, so at least we don't have the elements contributing?
When you're saying temporary, as of January, December?
A pub tent.
Yeah, some kind of tarp rigged, I, I don't know what could be done. Rent something from Bedrock, eh?
He's done a good job so far of starting to solve the management problem. Just tell him to take, go, keep going.
Okay. So if he wants, like, something like a, one of those blow-up tents, like, for tennis courts or something, we can borrow one of those?
Yeah. So, but we are concerned about the salt, I guess we're saying.
I'm glad to hear it, okay.
All right. My last thing, before we go on to the next person, is transportation and streets, but my last thing is to talk a bit about the noise ordinance, mainly because, right now, I'm armed and dangerous. I now have a sound meter from, that, it probably isn't one that we could use, but I'm going to try using it a little bit. But I wanted to call everybody's attention to something that I know was on the books, oh, 7393. And so there was a lot of discussion last Thursday, and I wish I would, no, I'm glad I wasn't here, actually, with the discussion of noy, of noise and regulation. In 93, council, against the mayor's wishes, allowed tables and chairs on sidewalks. We did it because we were interested in retaining the ambience of the city. We talked about what the distances are. At the time, initially, we said all tables or chairs or benches must be removed from the sidewalk 30 minutes before sundown until 8:00 AM the next day. But we amended it later, maybe outside only when business is open. I don't know how that is going right now, but that is, that certainly is something that is in the code and not in the zoning code. But I didn't know if you were aware of that. So we are, I think, on the record, saying we support those tables, whatever that means. But going back to the noise ordinance, oh, you know, this noise ordinance needs to be amended about five more times, and then we will really have a mess. But last time, we did try to do, to solve some of these problems, and I have in front of me the noise ordinance, oh, 8407, and it talks about vocal noise, and it seems to get at the problem. It says, between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM each Sunday evening through Friday morning, or between 12:00 and 7:00 on Saturday and Sundays, there's shouting, yelling, chanting, or making use of the human voice or vocal cords in louder than normal conversational tone or pitch, escalating vocal noise other than emergency situations. Those are all the different types. In such a manner as to be plainly audible at a distance of 500 feet from the building, structure, or vehicle in which it is located, or exceeds 85 decibels at any point outside the property plane, shall be prima facie evidence of the violation of this section. And then seven says, those businesses with outside operations that have noise or sound between the hours of 10:00 PM each, you know, and then same time period, in such a manner as to be plainly audible at a distance of 50 feet from the building, structure, or vehicle in which it is located, or exceeds 85 decibels at any point outside of the property plane, plane, or source of the noise or sound shall be evidence of violation. So I was wondering if the administration could go over this with the police and see if there's any way we can work on the enforcement, I mean, of 8407. Now, I do understand, I was down, I drove down at 1:30 on Saturday morning, I drove down Palmer Street, then Mill, then Stewart Street. There was no way, I mean, every single house in that block was in violation, I swear. Almost everyone, the ones at least on the lower end, and then turn the corner, still there. I mean, the place, that, just before the big windstorm, it was a riot. You know, I mean, it was just amazing. But I do...
Did you go to Rush yesterday? Did you see Rush yesterday?
I, I did.
On College Street?
Yes. But I think, I think that we're, that we did attempt to try and do, make some of the changes that were there. And it's just, I think it's very difficult. We need either more police or different approach. If somebody else wants to take this up, you can. We could say right now that the people that most likely are adversely affected by noise are other students. If there was any student on Palmer Street, Stewart Street, or Mill Street, that had to go to work at 7:00 o'clock on Sunday, on Sunday morning, they were in terrible shape at 2:00 Sunday morning, because they were going, they were still up. There was no way you could sleep through that bedlam. And, you know, so, don't, I am not anti-student. I just want you to understand that we did attempt yet another time to try and solve the problem of the noise ordinance. I'm not sure people have read it. I'm going to start walking around with my little device here and see what I find.
That's your decibel meter?
Yeah. That's what I got. I've got a tape, no, I don't have a taser. And so, but I've got it, and I want to, I want to see how it, how it sounds. And, you know, people were, I mean, I was interested in what they said in the paper, and we discussed it at home a bit, but I, I do think the noise ordinance, we need something. But the police also said to me, there's just no way that they can do anything at that 1:30 hour, when the people are just making lots of noise. And, and I don't know if that's, you know, whatever the administration can do would be welcome, but, if somebody else wants to take up this cause, feel free. Ask your friend Chris in the, in Miami, how, in Oxford, how they handle noise.
There isn't. I've asked, and I've been over to visit in the late night. I don't know if they have a noise ordinance, but it is not, it must be sufficiently enforced that there's no late-night noise tolerated, period.
You said not tolerated?
I mean, they said they don't have a problem. They don't have a...
I thought you said there was no noise.
No, and they don't have, they don't have a problem with it.
Amazing.
So, yes, and I was down on College yesterday at about 1:00 in the afternoon, and 1:30, and heard the noise, and went into the police station to talk to them about it.
That's legal, it's during the day.
Be good, but...
But, you know, you don't need your noise meter, you just need to, you need a tape measure, so you're 50 feet away, and if, if you hear it, then it's, then it's not, it's illegal. And I've never understood why that's difficult to enforce. I know we've been told that many times, but...
All right, that was just, this is just kind of like a response to the, the pressure that probably the administration is feeling with respect to these issues. And I don't have a solution. Well, any other utilities issues?
None.
None? We'll do sewer next time, whatever has to, has to be done next year. Oh, one more, one more thing before, we, Kathy, we should move, oh, Kathy's gone. We should move that money in so we can pay off that note. In the next ordinance, we write.
Which note is that?
Hocking Valley Bank, the one for the Oakmont.
Oh.
So, then we'll, then we'll be able to start to accrue money to do projects the next year, at least do design face, once we get out of that short-term debt. Okay, I'm done.
Okay, Transportation Committee. We have five items, and I'll try and be brief. We'll be dealing with...
We're all just going, oh my, what is this? Did you get the...
Sorry. Buses, motorcycles, bike racks, a street closing, and a meeting coming up. The first one of which, the, is a university courtyard proposal that I believe you received a copy of in your mailboxes today. And this is the city seeking authorization from the council to renew an agreement for bus services to University Courtyard. The previous contract was approximately $136,000, and this draft, you'll notice, has an increase with a proposed estimate at $143,000 for the next cycle. And this amount, the hundred, the new $143,000, is based on the renewal rates from McDonald, and it also builds in for eventual replacement of the buses.
Chris?
Yes?
Actually, that's an estimate. We have yet to actually negotiate with McDonald on their contract, and I'll need authorization for that, too, in theory. And again, what's going to happen is, whatever rate they charge us, will pass to Courtyard with a small factor of a capital, capital cost for replacing the buses eventually. Does that make sense?
Yes. Councilmember Phillips?
My only question is about the proposed rate, route change, which isn't actually in the contract, it's just kind of attached. So I would be curious about whether there's, the Uptown businesses see any potential difference if the loop only goes past the New Baker down President Street and back on down toward Clippenger. So it looks like they're talking about changing the route to keep it 20 minutes, and I would be curious, you know, what impact that has for students and possibly for Uptown businesses.
Okay.
Okay. What you're saying, the package that you receive is a proposal we sent to University Courtyard to renew the contract. Actually, contract ended in July of this year, so we are operating without a contract right now.
Right, I noticed that.
The proposed route has to do with the increased time to go, to make that loop. There's two proposals that were suggested. If you look at it, one proposal is actually increasing the time to every 25 minutes. Personally, I, I find that not the way to go. The alternative is to change the route a little bit. But realize, two things that slow that route down. One is that we now have the crosswalk on Richland, which is slowing the traffic down by Porter, because it has to take that route. The other one, actually, is because we now have a one, single lane on President, we have him going down Mulberry Street to in front of Baker, the New Baker Center. So that has added an extra tweak into the loop. We are, we brought that to Courtyard for them to decide which they would prefer. And again, this is just in, in a form of a proposal sent to them, but really, it's the, the, the main thrust is to get authorization, so I can do this contract. The nuts and bolts, it's actually probably more than you need to know, but at the same time, that's what we got. The other thing is that the, the additional money for the capital improvement is that we buy those buses that go to Courtyard, and we should put in a small amount of capital money aside for replacing those buses. And the other thing is that if we contract with Summit eventually, which goes online in fall of 2009, we'll also have to put, consider adding an additional bus, if that's the case, just so you know. But that would be another whole contract I'd come to you for.
So the proposed route would not go by as many businesses?
It would just not come quite all the way uptown. It looks like it would come up, go past the New Baker, and loop back down around.
It's about right.
Down to Richland.
Okay.
But most of it doesn't go, it doesn't go past, it just goes in front of Old Baker right now. It doesn't go much further than that. Isn't that what the old route said?
Yeah.
Okay, so rather than going up to Courtman, West Union?
So it's just a question, and maybe Ayuba has an opinion about that, and if Leslie was to say anything now, or if you guys want to talk about it, and look at the proposed route change, and like, let us know.
Except that it's taking students from the apartments to school, and if they want them up uptown, it's not that far, considering the congestion that the buses could create. I mean, I just think that at a certain point, we're talking about a very, it's like, one, two, three, three and a half times as much money comes from this as we get from the fare box. The fare box earns $40,000 any given year. And so this contract is important, and it's important that it run in efficient and timely fashion. You can see lots of heads in this bus, as opposed to the others, that are touring around.
Yeah, there have been a fair amount of people riding to go up by the New Baker Center. So we're talking about a block shorter, but we appreciate your comments on it.
Students do walk, don't they?
Definitely.
Cross the green, yes.
Okay, any other comments about the University Courtyard?
I just have to say that we instituted the change for the bus route, where they turn on Mulberry as opposed to President, go back down, and the bus drivers are telling us, everybody gets out at the Baker Center, even though they keep going, and there's chub, and, you know, to the...
They're still getting out.
Students just, they want to use the escalator, I don't know, and they could haul them, so they're kind of jumping out there.
Okay. Second item regards motorcycle fees, and just to alert people, the current rate is $15 a year, and that the, we'll probably be looking at that rate. It's not been increased for some time. So just to take a look at the history of these fees, and maybe look at what some other cities are charging. Councilmember Phillips?
As far as our history with it, I think part of the reason it's low is that we'd rather have them in the little motorcycle parking places, rather than taking up whole places at meters. So we want it to be kind of an incentive for people to use the smaller spaces that cars don't fit in.
Okay.
In terms of keeping more parking available uptown.
Okay. And so keeping the fee lower does that?
It makes it more attractive to buy the license than to just throw quarters in the meter, and take up a whole regular parking place.
Okay. All right, well, that's helpful information.
Okay.
Yes, Mayor, what?
Realize what we're talking about is, it's $15 a year. We have, I think, three motorcycle parking areas. There's been discussion trying to increase the number of those, just because there is more motorcycle ridership. In comparison to $15 a year versus what it costs to put money in a meter per day, it's quite a bargain. And I think we were just looking and saying, it hasn't changed in many years, that's all.
Okay. Raise it 10%.
Hmm?
Raise it 10% for five years in a row, or something?
We could.
They won't complain, then, Amy. They'll complain.
It might be, right, a compromise. All right, the next item is just to let you know that there probably, in the near future, there will be an appropriation coming through for the bike rack for the new bus. And this would be, it was not in the last appropriation where we were doing fare boxes, so this will be a separate item, and that, that will be in the next probably appropriation ordinance.
There were two buses.
We're getting two buses, but for the most, part of the dialogue is going on is, it might be easy just to buy the mountings for two buses, and, because one bus will always be a backup, so the idea is if one bus goes down, we can just transfer the rack from one to the other.
And it might save $1,000.
The mounting hardware might be, you might buy two sets of hot mounting hardware, one set of bike racks. Okay.
The next item is just to report that there's an international street fair that's going to be May 16th from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and we've received the first item of correspondence about that, requesting the street closing. So we'll be moving the legislation through on that later in the year. And last item that I have to report is that, to let the public know that I do have a meeting periodically, it occurs about every two weeks with the Transportation, the, the Street Department Director, and just to make that public announcement that that does happen, and that periodically Councilmember Butler does join us for that meeting to get updates on the streets. It's at the Street Department Building, and it's at 7:30 on Wednesday morning, and we have that every two weeks, so the next one will be occurring this Wednesday morning at 7:30.
AM.
AM, yes. Brightening.
Donuts?
No. I wish. Not even coffee. And are there any other miscellaneous items for transportation? Mayor Waugh?
Okay, realize we will enter the McDonald Athens Transit contract too. We're in a negotiation of that as well. So that's actually two contracts we're dealing with, the Courtyard as well as the McDonald one.
And the McDonald one comes up, expires at the end of the year, is that correct?
End of the year, yes. But we're going to start talking to them soon because our grant cycle is actually, we're applying for the grant this 30, the 30th of this month, and we're going to try getting a better number on what the costs are going to be per hour to run the buses. They will charge us. Last year, they were charging us $50.68 per hour, operating hour. And the question is, is, you know, they had built in a good margin for their gas and fuel costs. At the same time, they'd also built in a certain percentage of profit, of course. The next thing is what are they going to, what are we going to negotiate for next year? And I just, I need authorization on that. We have the grant, we have authorization for the grant. And there will be a public hearing on, on our grant the 30th of this month, September 30th. That's Tuesday here, 7 o'clock. And this will probably include maybe a route change, not this route change for Courtyard, but possibly one for the bus system itself. We're talking about some of that too, mostly because of the, some of the ridership. I think we want to, we want to change it so we go in front of Alden Library, I think it was the last thing I heard from Daryl. There's a lot of people who would like to get out at Alden Library. So that's one of the discussions that's going on. We'll have it together by the 30th.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
I have, I have a small question. In front of the old oasis, there's a crosshatching of lines. What does that mean?
It's a pedestrian walkway, isn't it? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah. As I understand, that entire area has been designated as pedestrian cross.
There's no signage?
I can request, or we can find out if that's a possibility. That would help clarify.
Technically, at an intersection like that with stop signs, the pedestrian has a right of way.
No, I just meant that it's ambiguous again, so.
It's big, I haven't been to it.
I don't have to go now, if I can help.
Does it look like a?
Chaos.
Chaos.
I think people have, for years, stopped for all the students that just plow through that intersection during the class change, and it hasn't been marked at all, so I guess.
Yeah, we thought it would be better just to have a square.
I'll have to look and see what it looks like. I haven't been through there.
Just go sometime at 11.
Oh, I know.
Five after 11.
Class change, it's always packed down, and you can't get through, you have to kind of edge through.
But that's the way it is.
What?
It's just the way it is, right?
That's the way it is. We used to have, realize, we used to park a bus right in front of the oasis at the same time to make it interesting, so.
But there is new striping that's across the entire diagonal slashed.
Oh, it's a big area.
Marking across the entire intersection there.
Okay.
So, okay. All right? I think that's-
That's what I thought it meant, but I thought-
All right, I think that's it for the Transportation Committee.
Finance and personnel, we're, we're down for miscellaneous. I think the mayor might have something about city code costs and is associated with.
Yeah, I, I could run through a few things here. I have miscellaneous, and I have one, two, three, four, five, six different little items here myself. Okay, let's go with the easy one, first of all. The rec equipment that you wanted on the last time's appropriation that fell off. If you remember, you were talking about that.
Yeah, in fact, I just talked to the auditor about that.
Okay. The other one is the Public Defenders contract. Essentially, that was not renewed as well, and I probably need authorization for that. What you're seeing is that that one was done in November 19th, 2007, 02607. And that actually went from July, interesting enough, went from July '07 to December 31st '07. I think they, at this time, we were trying to cycle around to a different year cycle, but we received an invoice this last, earlier this month about our first six months contract, which we don't have. So we need to probably authorize me to at least enter the contract, pay this past six months, and then start negotiating a new contract for the next year, starting from July all the way through. So we're already behind on that. The money is appropriated, that's what, right? Yes. It's just not, yes, it's just not contracted or, let's see. Other ones, dollars for the Athens City Code. Again, we're trying to put that online. We've got a company we're looking at, MuniCode, I believe it is. We have about, we're estimating the top end of this, just $9,000, is it?
This year.
What?
Just this year.
This year, yeah. And this, this, what will happen here is that we, we give it to them, they put it in some kind of web base, they will run, take their lawyers and screen it with a fine-toothed comb, at least part of it, and put it up on the web so we have it as a searchable base. Originally, you put some money aside for this, I believe it was, to buy the software. So, probably will need some money for that. I've got the contract downstairs, and I need the money to appropriate to do that. Let's see. I also see, let's see, she's pushing this towards me here. I got an email from Code saying they need, they need more money, additional $30,000 in their budget for postage.
How much did you say?
$3,000.
$3,000.
Yes, they're sending out lots of letters. And I don't think they're certified, just lots of letters. Rec equipment, Public Defenders. Let's see. I, there's a letter from Captain Pyle concerning the parking enforcement. I think we just, I gave a copy of this to Kathy last week. We discussed it at our meet, auditor's meeting. This concerns the Comm Plus, which is our people who take care of the tickets and everything like that. He's estimating that because of the turnover, the amount of money expense on that, as well as the money that has to be paid to the Bureau of Motor Vehicles for doing a registration block, we'll need about $16,000 in that line fund. I think it's 101-718-5371. Another one that we had, we had a safety day earlier in the summer, and Rick Cross was working on safety issues in terms of security. We wanted to put some of those things in place. George of Lands and Buildings is going to start putting some of the safety items in place. So we need some money in the fund line, the Lands and Buildings Safety Fund Line. It's basically under Safety Supplies. I would say about, I'm not sure how much really. He, he's, I know right now he wants about $400 just for some of the doors at Code, but there's other items like, for instance, well, we really shouldn't go into security items, but there's a whole mess of items that he wants to work through. I haven't seen the entire list, but maybe about $2,000 in that, just to have him start rolling on that. I looked at the fund, I think there's like $72 in the fund line right now, so that's not enough to do anything. The last item I have is, we just, we got the response from the CHIP grant. If you remember, we applied for CHIP grant, and one of the things we were asking for is about $315,000. They came back and awarded us $215,000 with the, with the idea that they want us to pull about $100,000 out of our economic revolving loan fund. So to accept a grant, I'll probably do that. I'm just letting you know that, that without these, that's one of the stipulations of accepting the grant, accepting the grant. And I guess it's my call to do that, but I, I've got, I should let you know, because we'll probably have to appropriate it and play with the money at that point. I guess what I'm hearing is that they don't want these things sitting around at this point, any of it. So it's got to be used or lost.
The revolving loan funds.
What?
The revolving loan funds?
Yes.
And it looks like we've got $318,000 in it?
318, oh, I thought about 290, but my-
318?
Okay. So we're, we're going to have to pull $100,000 out of that, just to be able to fill our, to do our match of the, of the grant. And that's real, all real I have, unless you can think of anything else? Questions? Okay. Kathy?
I have one.